Hello, everyone. Time being 6:35, I'll call the Halifax Planning Board into session. All members present. And I would like to just read the agenda. At 6:30, we have Amy Dwyer coming in for 894 Plymouth Street. Paul Bay State Alarm is building discuss for renting a unit there for business. 6:45, we have John Delano. We have a Form A coming in for 220-216 Hudson Street. 7 o'clock, we have Charlie Seelig discussion of zoning by law, Chapter 167-22. And 7:30, we have the hearing bylaws, of which we will be postponing those or continuing that. And then for business and discussion here, we have a reorganization of the board. Supplemental Planning Board Rules and Regulations. We have 241 Franklin Street request from Abada. The 229 Franklin Street to swap out screening trees for wire fence. See the correspondence. Comprehensive permit for Country Club Estates project. ZBA petition 915 Amadera Estates and 16722 and any other case law. Meeting minutes for June 4th, 2020. We have meeting minutes for June 18th, 2020. And then we have correspondence email from Assesa Holly Murray. Response to DeSantis' public document request with attached files for 11A Street and Gold Street. Email for the date 6:30, 2020 from Assesa Holly Murray. Public documents request, proof rebuttal letter on 6/18. Email 7/16, 2020 from Mutual Bank. Darren Grady, 336 Plymouth Street Drainage System with Attached Plan. Email from 7/6, 2020 from Ashley. I'll butcher the name here. Catatas, CS Energy, 241 Franklin Street Attached Letter, Site Plan. Two notices and a decision letter from the abutting town of East Bridgewater. Decision letter from a abutting town of Pembroke. Notice and memos from the Board of Selectmen and ZBA. Bills, we have zoning bylaw changes add for approval. Was approved, needs a signature. Any other business unscheduled before the board and post came in after the post of the agenda. Next scheduled meeting would be July 6th, August 6th of 2020. So do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Did we have everybody?
Yep.
I didn't hear a response from Amy.
Sorry, I accept the agenda.
Okay.
That's right.
All right. So first, we have on the agenda Amy Dwyer for 894 Plymouth Street. But before we do that, I'd like to welcome aboard our new members. That just got elected in Alan Dees and Rick Murray. I want to welcome you guys on. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
So just wanted to get that out. And then we have 6:30, so is Amy Dwyer with us?
AM.
You're welcome to do your presentation.
I am. We are currently anticipating renting the space at 894 Clement Street. Unit 3, new building. My husband and I own a storefront company. We're using the space for mostly for storage. We will be fabricating some of our materials out of there, but it will not be a walk-in business. It's mainly for the purpose of storing our materials. Kind of like a workshop for him and then the stuff gets delivered to the sites. Outside of that, we might have to accept a delivery once in a while. Child, sorry. But nothing to an extent of like every day in and out. It's mainly to stop the business from being here in our home so that he can have a space that's more suitable for him to work out of.
Okay.
I don't know what Halifax requires for signage if he was to have a small sign. And I'm not sure as far as like permit wise, if we have to have anything for a permit. How big of a sign we can have. Paul did talk to us about possibly putting something out front there that we would be able to have the company's name on there. I don't know what he has in the works for that, so.
Yeah, we have pretty extensive signed bylaws. You can work with the building inspector on the sign. If you have one that you would like to present, you can present it to the planning board. The planning board could take a look at that.
Okay.
But.
We would still have to have the sign company make a sign, but I didn't know if there was anything that you guys might have on the site or something that I could access town wise that would give mentions of signs and how much.
Yeah, we would have requirements for the size. I think it's based off of the frontage in the beginning of the building. We'd have to take a look, but we can definitely get you that information. Do you happen to know if they have a larger like directory? I believe there's like two or three units in that building.
There's a total of four units. Paul himself is occupying one of the units.
Okay.
So but like again, he was very vague as far as signage. He did tell me that he was going to eventually have something out front, but I don't know what his plan is for that, so I figured I'd kind of get ahead.
Are you looking to get something on the building or something freestanding out front?
Um, I wasn't sure what your town laws were as far as if we were to have some type of like those signs that you see out in front of the buildings that have the lettering on them. They're they sit at an angle that would like say the company's name on it or even something that's in the window that we could put out in the window. That way you could see it from the street. I mean, it's.
Okay. Like, so we do have all, we have a lot of signed bylaws. I think if we can get you a link to those and then maybe you can draw up something and then bring it to us and we can take a look. Just because we have so many different bylaws for it, it would be good to know what you will propose and then we could figure out.
It wouldn't be anything enormous or because like I said, we're not a company that would have customers walking in and out of there. It's nothing like that. It's just mainly, you know, advertising the phone number for the business and, you know, information as far as what we do. That's all.
Because right now Paul doesn't have any intention of putting a sign up.
He doesn't have a board or anything and my husband hadn't talked to him yet as far as putting anything like even adhered to like over our door. He had just said that he was eventually going to put something out front that would advertise for all four bays, but we don't even know when that would go in, so.
It would be good to coordinate that with him to see what he's looking to do because the limit to the signage is for the total lot.
Okay.
So, you know, it would make sense to make something that's going to fit in with whatever the ultimate plan is, I would think.
Okay.
And then each business in there, you know, could be a section of that sign. Maybe you guys could start that off with the first section. I don't know.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to know like if there was any like specific laws that we had to like, if you had something that was on the website or through the building department that we'd be able to get clarification as far as like how much it is for the permit for the sign and why not?
Yeah, like I said, our bylaws are pretty extensive. So really would depend on what it is you're looking to do and the overall signage for the site.
Okay. And then also too, as far as going like through the town hall to just at least put us out there so that we are obviously we're a business in Halifax. I mean, he's national, so he travels all over, so I don't know what you guys would require as far as licensing for our business through the town.
If you're not actually selling product from there and it's not the retail end of the business, then I don't think you'd need any permits for that. And as far as like one of the things that we're going to be looking at is like the use of the building to make sure that it kind of goes with the original plan for it. It sounds like it does. Do you know how many people that you expect to have in and out as far as employees?
Um, my husband and like myself would be there on occasion. Other than that, he has one worker and that's my son. But other than that, like it's for the most part, it's probably always going to look closed because he's always on the road traveling, so.
Yeah, so that addresses concerns as far as parking and things like that. So if there's not a heavy flow, then there certainly would be parking provided and you'd be able to meet all those requirements.
Right, yeah, we wouldn't even, a lot of his work, even the stuff that he does for repair work for windows and screens, that stuff that he picks up at the residence and then he delivers it back to the residence. So we wouldn't have the foot traffic of the public coming in and out of the building.
The only thing I was concerned when you said you would make is it's not really a manufacturing type thing. It's just light assembly, so it's storage, light assembly, then transport. Okay. As far as the dimensions for the sign, I'm not really sure because like I have the book, so I'm not sure how to navigate through the town's website. But you also may be able to go into the building department and talk to Terry and ask her if she could give you a printout of just that section. And then you could kind of figure out what type of sign. Talk to Paul and maybe see if, you know, if it's going to be something on the building or freestanding out front. But Terry at the building inspector, they should be able to get you that information.
Okay. Right, perfect.
So are you looking for a site plan approval?
They just, to be honest, they just told us that we had to go through you guys first before we occupied the space, so.
Okay, so that's basically what you're looking for is a site plan approval. And what that is, is to see that your business fits the site plan that was approved there. And that's in regards to the number of parking spaces, employees and that. So we'd kind of have to have that written down as to what it is that you're proposing to do there.
Okay.
And then present it for the site plan approval. And then we take a look at the site plan that's on record and see what they have for parking spaces versus what you're going to use.
Okay.
Which I'm sure there's no problem with it, but.
Yeah, just a formal list so we can sign off on.
Okay. Is there anything that I myself need to submit to the town or do I need to put anything in writing from the company via letterhead or anything?
Well, I mean, if you presented for the site plan review, then everything would be on there.
Okay. All right. And that goes direct to you guys at town hall?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And when are you looking to open up there?
Um, he's supposed to meet with us by the end of the month.
Yeah.
That way he can kind of finalize everything for us, give us the paperwork, give us the number for the utilities, the ID codes for the alarm system and like the meter numbers for all the utilities. So we'd be looking at operational in there by August 1st.
Okay. Because our next meeting's not until August 6th.
Okay. All right. So I can put all that paperwork together and send it in to you guys and then it'll just go on the agenda for the August 6th meeting for approval?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And you can get in touch with our secretary at the planning board for that information.
Okay.
All right.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do. I'm just trying to figure out what type of business you see.
It's a storefront company. We do glass and metal for commercial storefronts. And then we also do residential shower doors, windows, screen repair, things like that.
Okay, very good.
Rick or Amy?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Did everybody get the information on John Delano's Form A?
Yeah.
Yes, I guess.
Did everybody get a chance to take a look at it?
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman.
I also took a look at it.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, it appears that reviewing the checklist in the application, it appears that he's met all the standards. It's an estate lot. Building setbacks are on there. Access seems to be fine. I see no problem with the, that Form A application.
Okay, and just to let everybody know, a Form A means that the subdivision control does not apply. So there's really not a lot of things that we turn down a plan for when it comes in for a Form A. And our endorsement does not guarantee that the lot is a buildable lot. They still have to meet all the zoning requirements.
They were referring to a shed in the checklist. Is that the one that's on the corner of Lot 6 on the right, the one that they're subdividing this Form A off of? Is that the shed they're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't see anything wrong.
Gordon?
Yep.
This is John Delano and Joan Delano.
Oh, okay.
If.
I didn't realize you were on.
If I could clarify about the shed, it was an existing chicken coop when we bought the land from the Abada, which is to the right of the lot. And so we just made it into a shed.
Okay.
So it's been there all these years that we've been here. And it meets the shape factor?
Yep. We put the circle where it belongs.
Looks good to me.
Okay, any other questions? Does anybody want to make a motion to endorse?
I'll make a motion to endorse the Form A that is presented tonight by the Delanos. Is that all I, do I need to add anything to that?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we have a motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we need to do a roll call?
I think we just did it. I heard Rick, Mark, Amy, Alan and myself, all yes.
Mr. Chairman, how do you want to handle signatures? Do you want to leave it in the office for us to go in and sign?
Yeah, we could do it that way now because we can go back into the town hall. Wow.
What we were doing before is we actually had the stamps and now that we don't, I don't know how long that would be until we could get new ones made.
Might as well just go in for now, I'd say.
Yeah, I don't have a problem going in and signing.
I don't think we have that many things, so.
No.
It'll work for me.
I'm assuming the bylaws in the office filed with the application?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, have a great rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So thanks.
Okay, maybe now would be a good time we jump into reorganizing. We have a new board, so we need to reorganize. We need a chairman, vice chairman and clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mark Milius as chairman.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So I think that was unanimous.
Hold on, I'm not sure that I fully understand the consequence of that.
It's too late, we voted.
I didn't get your vote.
It's kind of like clerk last year, remember you didn't want to.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm not sure that I'm, I know there's other members that are actually like more available and able to do more things as far as going into the town hall and things like that. I'd hate to limit the board by my participation.
That's honorable of you, Mark. So does that mean you're not accepting us?
Yeah, I decline. I appreciate it, but.
Okay. All right. Is there another nomination?
I nominate Alan.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I guess.
Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous. Then we need a vice chair.
I nominate Mark Milius as vice chair unless you don't feel comfortable with that, Mark. You've got a lot of.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion seconded. All in favor?
Sure. Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then we need a clerk.
I nominate Amy.
No, I was going to nominate Rick Murray.
I'll second that.
Which one?
Rick Murray, I guess.
Yeah.
So we have a nomination of Rick Murray and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We're reorganized. And there's a sheet, there'll have to be a sheet at the, in the office to be signed too. It's got to be recorded with the new member's signatures and then the members for the chairman, vice chair and clerk.
So all of us, right? We have to all sign it? Okay.
Yep. Okay. Chairman want to take over?
I guess. I'm a little new at this, but and I don't have my watch.
Sure, I have my watch.
7:01.
It's 7:01. I guess being 7:01, we have a discussion with Charlie Seelig regarding a bylaw 167-22. Charlie, are you on board?
Yeah, I'm here. What I, my intention was simply, as we discussed a few weeks ago at one of the planning board meetings, was I knew that at least at one point the planning board wanted to talk about 167-22 and I wanted to provide an opportunity to give a listening ear. If there's nothing to discuss, then that's fine too. You can move on to your other business.
Are there any members that have an issue with 167-22 that they need to have clarified? Charlie, was I on for that?
No, this, you may have been in the audience. This was, this was more than a month ago now, but no, I'm happy to have the meeting move along. I'll get home that much sooner.
Okay. Is there, is there any of the board members that need a clarification on 167-22? My recollection is that's on repetitive petitions. It is. And I did provide Charlie with some information. I don't know if it got to the board a few months ago on the repetitive petitions. I don't recall exactly what the issue was, but if, if there's any need to discuss it, we can.
I'm good at this time.
Amy? You're also, Amy?
No, I've already discussed it many times.
Okay, Rick?
I'm also with it.
Okay, all right, then we will move on. I guess the next item on the agenda is there's a question on supplemental planning board rules and regulations. And that was probably a question that I had and I did get a copy of that. Do all of the board members have copies of Halifax or supplemental regulations?
I believe so. I believe I have all that stuff. I don't have all of it in front of me right now, but I can go get it.
Is it in our email from this week?
No, no, no. The supplemental regulations is a book that's probably two and a half to three inches thick. It has all of Halifax's codes, its bylaws, signed bylaws, but it also has one section which is Section 167-25 or 35 that has all of the supplemental regulations that the planning board has regarding road width, drainage calculations.
Oh, yeah, I think I do have that.
Okay. Design analysis and all of that. That's the, I was looking for that initially and I did get a copy. Rick, I don't know, did you get one of those?
I haven't really looked through it all. I think I have that.
Okay, now this is a very large book that.
Chapter 235?
Yeah.
Yes.
35.
Subdivision.
Yeah, subdivision control and well, actually, I do have it here. It would be Halifax's supplemental regulations. Rick, this would have been a very large book.
Yeah.
So you think you might have that? If you don't, then I think we'd probably have to.
Yeah, I've got it, I've got it right here.
You do? Okay. All right, so if everybody's got.
Do you have it, Alan, that you can pick it up and show me what you're talking about?
I can just show you. I have it in a large book, but I'm not all that good with the camera, but.
Oh, so that's like, okay, yeah, so like right. I think I only have 167 and then I think I have. I think I only have 167, and then I think I have subdivision control, which is 235. Does that make sense?
That's 235, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, so everybody has a copy of that. That's why I think that was on the agenda. Next item for discussion is 241 Franklin Street. It appears that there's a request from the abutto regarding removing the trees that the planning board approved and instead putting in a fence. On my agenda, it doesn't tell me who it is. I believe somewhere in the notes, it might have been a Michael DeBona.
Yeah.
Don't have the right agenda here.
July 16th. Right at the top.
Yeah, I did see the name somewhere. I don't see it on the official.
Maybe in our email, or maybe on the.
Yeah, I don't see it on, I don't see it on the official agenda, but I did remember recall seeing the name in the, in one of the emails. Mr. DeBona, I got to apologize, I'm not 100% familiar with the project.
That's okay.
I'm assuming that you've got, the planning board has issued site plan approval for this particular project, and I don't know that you're the applicant. It sounded to me like you were the abutto.
I am, yes.
Okay, and is the applicant on tonight that is going to be okay with either swapping out the trees for the fence? Is that person on also? I guess not, so, Mr. DeBona, you might want to address to the board what you'd like to do.
Yeah, so we actually went to the conservation commission because they sent a letter to conservation, basically saying the same thing that we requested the fence. It's kind of a convoluted issue. They basically said we were going to get a visual screen. Where they put their road, there's not really enough room for the approved visual screen, two rows of trees separated by five feet. So now, I actually sent an email to them in May saying, is this something we could do with a fence? They replied to me, no. Basically saying, we're going to go by what was approved. So I sent another email, excuse me, in June saying, where the road is, there's obviously not enough room. You know, let's try to work this out and see what we can do, you know, before the trees get put in. And then we were approached by the engineer on site and said, what do you guys think about a fence? So, the issue we have as an abutto is, we brought it up a couple of months ago and nothing was said about it. But now, the length of the fence and the length of the visual screen is not sufficient. So if it was a visual screen, trees, green, going to blend with the environment, we were okay with that. Now, they want to basically take that same length of screening and put a single fence in, which is going to stop basically in the middle of the yard. It's going to look kind of foolish. So we asked if they could extend it to the property line, which is about another 175 feet. So it'll go from 200 feet of visual screening to 100, to 375 feet of fencing, and they said absolutely not. That's not going to happen. So, I, if I can share my screen, I have a document that we received showing this. Do you guys want to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, please.
So just to bring everyone up to speed, this is, this road red line here is 241 Franklin. This is my house at 229 Franklin, and all that we're talking about here is this piece out back, and I can zoom in on this, maybe. So, what they, what they proposed is this visual screen, which is a number of trees along our northern border of our property. So, again, when the, when the project was going on, before any of these, any of this foliage was cut down, they said, you know, trees, and we said, that sounds great. You know, you don't want a fence in the backyard. Trees would be great. So now, all of this is clear. This whole roadway is clear, and they want to replace just this small area with a fence. So it's just be a freestanding fence along the, along the northern property line. My problem is, when they put the road in, as you can see in this drawing, this 16-foot gravel drive, which is this gray line, where the trees fall, where they're supposed to be put, is in the middle of the road. So, they cannot fit two rows of trees, which is what was proposed.
I see.
Okay, we see that.
Just to be clear, what would the green lines be if?
The green line was, I'll back it out a little bit. The green line was another proposed road. As you can see, it goes off here on the left-hand side of the screen.
Okay, and that was to show the difference between the proposed, okay?
Yeah, I don't know what, what those lines happened to stay on there for, but yeah, that was another road that they had proposed, I think, for another, for another project, so.
All right, that's cool. I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
But again, as you can see, my house is here. This is actually wooded in this area, and all this is open, so this would have been a continuation of trees. And my logic on it was, this is supposed to be a 200-foot screen. So if you take 200 feet of one row of trees and 180, 190 feet of a second row of trees, and you just put it on the end, it gets down to this property line, which from point here to point here is 375 feet. And that's, that's what we would be requesting of the fence.
Do you have any pictures of your backyard and what it looks like now? I mean, could you?
I don't know that I have them on my laptop here. We could certainly send them to the board. I'm assuming it'll be continued to the next meeting, but we can certainly, in the meantime, send those pictures off, yeah.
All right, so I definitely think we can work with something. I don't know if we could necessarily enforce a change to the fence, but I wish someone from their property was here to represent it, because then we could kind of throw some back and forths. I mean, would you be willing, say, if you preferred the trees, would you be willing to allow the trees on the other side of the property line to still provide two rows?
Explain what you're saying, on the other side of the property line?
I'm just saying, if the trees are more desirable than the fence, but the trees wouldn't fit, would you be willing, say they moved the trees south and maybe they were on, onto your property, would that be desirable? Like, because that's, I think, something that we could easily propose and work with them. Say, hey, we agreed on this many trees, the location changed, but you're still going to put this many in this spot. I'm just wondering if that's like a good fix.
Well, one, it would be on our property, right?
Yeah, so you'd have to be cool with that.
We actually have planted trees, basically around the whole, this whole edge of the property line, this little blue line. We have, we have smaller trees, but we have trees going all around this property line.
Okay.
In, you know, waiting for this project to happen, knowing that it was going to be open, knowing there was going to be a road there, and they were willing to give us the screening, so of course we said, yeah, that'll, you know, they were putting in some, some large trees, six feet tall by, you know, five feet wide. So it was, it was a decent tree, and it was two rows, because it was supposed to provide an immediate screen. They weren't supposed to have to grow for 10 years before they were doing their.
That, that's just why I was trying to think of some proposal that would still have the trees, because I think they'd be effective, but as far as the fence goes, we could definitely propose that.
Well, what happens when something can't be complied with in a site plan? Do we have to bring it back for a renegotiation? Because.
I'm just not sure. Maybe those trees and the plan that we're looking at, maybe that's something that was added afterwards. I don't know that we required that on our site plan. I think that might have been something that they provided to Mr. DeBona. I'm not sure on that, but.
Yeah, the trees were on the original site plans.
Okay.
Yeah, there's those. I know the road has, has, I don't want to say drifted, but we went out when the guys were building the road saying, hey, it seems like it's awfully close. It's supposed to be 15 feet here, and they said, oh, we, you know, these things drive by GPS, so this is where the road's supposed to go. We said, okay.
Yeah, it's just strange, because, well, what we're looking at here, just to be clear, is not anything that we endorsed. This is either a CAD file or something.
Yeah, this is, we got this from, from one of the engineers who was doing the surveying. So this is, this is where they surveyed that road to be.
I wish. Unfortunately, I don't think we have access or any way for us to pull up and see what we actually endorsed. Just because I don't think we have anybody in the building or with access to that. The other thing I can think of is that if we had time to get a copy of it into our hands and contact the abutto, maybe next meeting, I'm sure you're probably trying to get it resolved faster than that, but I think if we could all see the difference between what we endorsed and the new proposal, then maybe we can hash something out.
Yeah, the project's basically over, so all their travel has been done with no trees, no screening, so at this point, we just want to get it done correctly. And like I said, from my, my knowledge, I mean, doing two rows of these, this size trees is going to be a lot more expensive than doing one row of a fence.
All right, so like, that's nothing I'm, I'm willing to speak on right now, but like, I definitely would be willing to propose that and say, and to invite them to come to our meeting and say, hey, we have a proposal from an abutto. We'd like you to come in, have a talk, and see if we can work something out.
But isn't it not really like a proposal, but rather they didn't follow the site plan and they need to?
Again, I'd have to see the exact site plan that we signed off before I can say that they won't fit. Like, if that, if that gravel driveway, if it's the issue that they put the driveway in the wrong spot, then, you know, we have another issue.
Any other members got any comments?
I was going to say, Mike, what kind of fence are you talking about? I mean, you might want to be specific in that because, you know, chain links. Yeah, are you talking privacy fence?
We had talked about a white vinyl, just a six-foot tall, solid white vinyl fence, and I saw it, and that's actually what what conservation had in their notes, was a white vinyl fence. I mean, you guys, you guys said chain link, is that what it says in the correspondence?
Oh, no, 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 I just wanted to be sure that we, we knew exactly what you were asking for.
Yeah, like I said, the engineer who was working on the site, he actually came over, he actually printed pictures, showed us what it would, what it would look like, and, you know, we asked about extending it to the property line. He said, you know, that's a no-go. So he said, okay, and, and he's not the, he's, he's just the construction superintendent, so.
Well, as far as things go, we're, if they don't propose anything in this, we're going to hold them to the trees, as far as I'm concerned, as of right now. If we can come up with something that everyone agrees on, that'd be great. But as far as things go, if, if we look at that site plan and those trees are supposed to be there, maybe they have to move the road. Or come up with something that everybody agrees upon.
Right. Okay.
Any other comments?
So what are we going to do? Are we going to bring this to the next meeting on August 6th and then invite the developer?
I would suggest that. Mr. DeBona, have you reached out to the developer at all regarding this, or just the, the site person that you met there?
Oh, no, I reached out to the developer in, in May, like I said, asking about the fence, and was told that we have to go by what's on the, on the, on the print, the plan. And then I reached out again in June, because I actually came out and marked the locations where the trees are going to go, and I reached out and said, you know, again, we don't want to make a big stink out of it, but let's work it out before, before the trees are in and they got to be moved. And a couple of weeks, and we got no response in that email, and a couple of weeks after that, I was approached by the, the site superintendent saying, hey, what about a fence? And that was, that's where we are. That was about two or three weeks ago. So I think that's what, what spurred this to say, hey, you know, let's make a, a change to the plan.
Okay, so right now you have no fence and no trees?
Correct.
Okay. I guess the appropriate thing would be to continue it to the next meeting and request that the developer come in, unless you guys can have some sort of agreement prior. I, I think we'll be back in a position, we should be back at town hall, so we all should be able to review the original plan. And if the plan states that there's supposed to be 28 trees, then unless there's some modification, that has to go in. Now, I guess my question to you is, if they manage to put the trees in, are you okay with that?
Again, if they'll fit. I don't see how they're going to fit. So where they're proposing to put the trees, and again, I can send some pictures to the board. They're, they're not spaced this way, and, I mean, I don't know how, how much the board can hold them to this spacing. I mean, in the, in the
They have to move the drive.
I mean, it, it spells out, you know, the number of trees, then spacing, two rows, the species of tree. I mean, all that's in the order conditions.
That's what's on the plan. That's what they need to provide.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we'll hold them to that unless they provide something, and you're the abutto on that property, so it's going to have to be something that works for you as well.
Okay.
So their, their proposal is going to have to make everyone happy, certainly.
Just to clarify, you said order of conditions. Are you talking about the conservation order of conditions? Or you're talking about the site, enough of me with the site, so, and I will go into the office to look at the whole site plan. Conservation required these, or planning board?
I believe that's what they were put on, was conservation, yes.
Okay. I would suggest that we continue it. The problem, though, would be that if conservation added these to the plan, then your order of, their order of conditions would have to be amended to reflect what's going in there now versus what is proposed. They would have to do an amended order of conditions.
Okay, and that's probably why they reached out to conservation. Like I said, we met with them Tuesday.
Oh, you met with them Tuesday?
Yeah, this past Tuesday.
The owner of the property hasn't met with anybody?
No, they weren't, they weren't present, no.
My suggestion, I guess, would be, as long as the board members concur, is to continue it. I, I plan, I'll do a site visit if any of the board members want to go out and take a look at the site. Maybe to get a feel as to whether the road is in the wrong place. I don't have a scale on this map, but if the overhead wires are in the right position, we can, you can kind of, I can scale it in the office to see. And it looks like there's some bounds and stuff out there. But that would be my suggestion, and I would suggest that we're going to have to reach out to the property owner and have them come in.
I, I do want to point out, it does say wire fence on the agenda for 241, and so that might need to be amended.
Yeah, well, the, I did see the wire fence on the agenda, but I did see another communication that said the white vinyl fence. And I immediately thought, okay, if somebody wants to put a white vinyl fence out there, who's going to maintain it? But, I'm sorry, Joanne just reached in on an email correspondence, and I don't have the ability to check, but I don't think what's on the agenda.
There is fencing. I'll try and share it if you, if you want.
Okay, why don't you?
I'll try.
Do you have to get rid of his share?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah, so I have to take stock share, so, yeah. The, the conservation commission agenda actually says, change the screening to vinyl fence.
Okay, I did see something that said vinyl.
Yeah, this was it right here.
You know, if it's, I don't think the agendas would matter much. It would be whatever you guys can agree upon, and then it has to fit into whether it be the conservation order of conditions or our site plan approval. This privacy fence, is that picture come from who?
That was in our email I put it up.
Oh, okay, that was in.
From Joanne. So do you want to put it up again?
No, that's okay. I, for some reason, I missed that. Maybe I missed that attachment. I do remember some, the business about vinyl.
Yeah, there was a letter, too, so you probably read that.
Okay. Any other board members got a question?
No, I saw that correspondence of the fence, too, in the letter.
Okay.
I would just suggest that we get in touch with the property owners and make sure that they're, they have representation at the next meeting and try to get it resolved.
Okay, Joanne is on, so I would ask if she can hear that she'll do that and go into the office to make sure. I'm going to suggest that we continue this. I don't know that we really need a motion to continue it. I would suggest that we can continue it to a time certain next week, or, I shouldn't say that. I'd let, refer that to Joanne, and she can schedule it based on whatever else we have for the next meeting. Are you okay with it, Mr. DeBona?
Yes, that's fine, yep. And I'll reach out to the, to the property owner as well, send him another email, you know, inform that about this meeting, the. know, inform that about this meeting, the conservation meeting and just, you know, maybe, maybe they say, sure, go ahead and next meeting you just sign off.
Okay. And if the developer, you know, wants to meet with one of the board members out there, if they reach to, reach out to Joanne in the office, we can try to accommodate.
I would go out.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So see if you can, if you can make that happen, we'll work with you on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. Good night.
I don't have, oh, yes, I do have a time, it's 7:26. So wait a few more minutes before we deal with the zoning bylaw changes. The next discussion item was on the comprehensive permit on the 40B project. I'm not really up to speed on that, so I'm gonna have to probably defer that to Gordon or one of the members that have been for a while. My understanding has been continued, but that's all I really know.
Yeah, it, it has been continued and there's, there's really nothing to discuss until they really get the, the, the hearing for the comprehensive permit opened up.
Okay. I have not heard, maybe Charlie has heard, when that's gonna be scheduled by the aftertown meeting?
Well, right now for the chapter 40B, it's currently July 29th. The ZBA is discussing whether to postpone the commencement of the hearing to a date later, whether in August or September with the developer. Right now, the ZBA is waiting to hear back from the developer about whether they want to have the hearing start on July 29th or they're willing to continue to delay. And if so, what a good date is. So, I mean, everybody knows that, you know, the discussions are going on, it just hasn't reached to the conclusion whether they're gonna go with July 29th or another date.
Okay, at this point, we still don't have a facility that's gonna be large enough to handle 30 or so people.
Right. Even the, unfortunately, under the stipulations of phase three, even the gym, let alone multipurpose room, the maximum you can have for a gathering, and I understand there are other uses that, you know, you could have more people, but under the state directives, gatherings such as a ZBA meeting, you can't have more than 25 people in an enclosed space, no matter how large the enclosed space is. So we're, you know, that's one of the reasons why we're coming up with options about delaying. If necessary, the meeting, the hearing could be done via Zoom, you know, it's obviously just like we're having our planning board meeting right now. There are some obvious limitations to that. The other possibility is if we, you know, we're looking at getting equipment that would allow us to do a better hybrid Zoom in-person meeting. So some people could be attending by, you know, in person, but then be able to, other people would be able to fully participate via Zoom. But that requires a little bit of a audiovisual equipment along with IT and working with a firm on that aspect of it. So, but ultimately, you know, it's up to the ZBA and the applicant. If they want to do a Zoom meeting, for instance, on July 29th and start the hearing, then that's where we're gonna go. If they want to wait to see if the restrictions will be relaxed a bit more in subsequent weeks, they can do that too.
Okay, so Charlie, you will keep us posted on that. Okay, we'll continue this and Joanne can put it back on the agenda. Well, actually, we're not meeting again until the 6th, so.
Well, I'll keep you informed. I mean, we'll, you know, if the intention is to send out, is, is to continue the, not continue, but just start the meeting at a later date or start the hearing at a later date, I'll send something out earlier than 29th.
Okay.
My suggestion would be that we post the meeting for the 29th and if it gets postponed, it gets postponed. We should know sometime before that, so just in case the board members participate so that we would be posted.
Okay, Gordon, the only question I have is, it needs to go through the zoning board of appeals first?
It doesn't go to the planning board.
So there's no, there's no need for us to post it on the 29th unless there is gonna be a meeting, unless, I mean, if, if we are going to attend, as long as Joanne knows three days prior, she can post it for us. So is that what you're making?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Because, because. The way it works is the ZBA will have the meeting, but the ZBA has asked us to participate because they're not familiar with drainage and the road building and, and everything else. So typically what we've done in the past is we participated with the zoning board in their meetings and then collaborated with them as to what the designs look like and so forth, because it does not come before the planning board by itself. But we act as an arm of the ZBA to help them along.
Okay, has anybody reviewed any of the drainage counts to date? I don't know that the ZBA has that, those accounts to handle that.
Yeah, they do, they'll send it out for review of the whole project.
Oh, yeah. So it's already been reviewed by the ZBA's consultant. And all that information is up online under the ZBA section of the website, all the, the proposed documents and also the review by this, the peer review are up on the town's website in the ZBA section. If you look at the ZBA and then go to the chapter 40B, you'll find the planned documents along with the peer review.
Okay, good. And the rest of the board members heard that, so you can take it upon yourself to, to review that to see what kind of, basically, we're not gonna be voting on it, they just need our, some sort of input.
Yeah, we just give them our expertise and what we have and help them along because they're just, you know, they're not familiar with the whole process there.
Okay, all right. Now being 7:32, we have a hearing scheduled on a zoning bylaw change. And I, I've, I've heard that I guess we're going to change that hearing until, I don't have a date. Maybe Joanne can help us with, we want to make sure that this plan, this zoning bylaw hearing, people will be able to attend. That's what I'm kind of assuming.
Correct.
We've, we've kicked it down the road.
So basically, what we've been doing is looking to see when the town meeting is gonna actually happen. And it looks like it would be at the earliest, the end of August, but if I'm correct, Charlie said possibly into September.
Right, yeah, right now, the official date is August 29th. If the state budget isn't completed, and it certainly is not gonna get completed this month, but if it's not completed until late August, we'll have one more temporary recess to September 12th. If it's completed, you know, at a reasonable, early enough in August, we might go for the 29th, but the way the legislature is moving, the how, how not fast they're doing, I don't see them doing it in early August either. So I'm, I'm betting, I'm betting on September 12th.
Okay. I'd probably suggest that if, if we've got the, the space and there was a little talk earlier that of how many people that can go into the great hall, and I don't remember what that number was.
Yeah, it's 12 for the great hall. It'd be, the, it's based on eight people per thousand square feet. Great hall's just about 1,500, give or take, so we're using 12 as a number. If we wanted to go to 25, we would move over to the multipurpose room at the elementary school.
Okay.
You have five, five members of the board and, you know, you're gonna have members from the zoning board and so forth. So when you start putting the, if we get some public interest in it, you're definitely gonna go over 12 people.
So the great hall is out. I, I guess.
And hopefully, you know, they'll make another change and make it so we can have a few more people. So that's why we were kind of kicking it down the road to, to stay in touch with the town meeting and hopefully open it up so we could have a public hearing.
Okay, so I guess why don't we move it to our next agenda and maybe we'll have a little better idea as to where we can hold it. And then we can, we can make a decision on advertising it then. I imagine it has been advertised, but where it's been so long, we would need a few weeks to get the ad in the paper, so we can't wait till the last minute, I don't believe.
Well, we don't, we don't have to advertise, it's been advertised and every time we postpone it down, we're, we're setting it to a time certain, so that's the continuation.
Okay.
Yeah, working off that original notification.
Now, is that gonna be okay, Charlie, to work off that notification?
As long as you keep making the changes at your meetings, in the sense of each time you've postponed, you've done that at a planning board meeting. People have had the right to attend, so to speak, the meetings, or they can read the minutes of the meetings so that if they want to know what the current status is of the hearing, there's information available. It would be improper if you were doing it, not, you know, making these decisions not at a meeting, but these means are open to the public. So any decision you make to continue or in essence, you know, to continue the hearing to a specific date and time is perfectly legitimate, you don't have to re-advertise.
Okay. Then I guess I'd entertain a motion to continue this zoning bylaw changes hearing until whatever somebody wants, feels comfortable with.
You, you need to open the hearing for us.
We're gonna.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the bylaw review.
Bylaw changes?
Bylaw changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I believe we need to take a roll call vote. So why don't we start with Rick Mary?
Yeah.
Gordon Anders?
Yes.
Amy?
Yep.
Mark Millius?
Yes.
Alan Diaz, yes. All right, our zoning bylaw change hearing is now open.
Okay, I make a motion to continue the hearing until August 6th at 7:30.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
That's Gordon Anders.
Yep.
All in favor, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
Rick Mary, yes?
Amy Trup, yes.
Gordon Andrews, yes?
Mark Millius, yes.
Alan Diaz, yes. I need a motion to close that hearing or suspend it?
Make a motion to reopen our regular planning board meeting.
That, that motion should be either to suspend it or to close it, Charlie?
Well, no, because I already made the motion to continue, yeah.
So he continued it already.
He continued it, okay, I'm fine. So your, your motion was to?
Reopen the planning board regular meeting.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Aye, yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yep.
Alan Diaz, yes. So we're back into our regular scheduled meeting. And the next item on the agenda is ZBA petition 915, Amanda Estates. And we're back to 16722 or any other case law. You'll have to help me with this, I have no idea why it's on the agenda.
Me either. I think that basically we've already waived talking about it, so I would just waive it out.
That might just be something that stuck to it.
Okay, so we need not have any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, all right. Why don't we go to meeting minutes? And those members that were there on June 4th would be the only ones that would be ready to vote that. I have not looked at the meeting minutes, I have looked at them, but there's no reason, I wasn't part of the board then. So if, does anybody have any questions on the June 4th meeting on the minutes?
I don't.
I do not, on the June 4th, I don't.
You don't. Mark?
Oh.
Okay, I, I would entertain a motion to accept the June 4th, 2020 minutes. Those voting would be Mark Millius, Amy Trup and Gordon Anders.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 4th, 2020.
I'm sorry.
Gordon seconds it?
All in favor, I'll take a roll call. Gordon?
Aye, yes.
Amy?
Aye, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is the meeting minutes from June 18th. Are there any questions, changes? It went quiet, does that mean the thing?
I didn't, I didn't have any issues.
Amy?
Just let me look at one little thing, please.
You're fine with them?
I am.
Okay, those voting on these minutes would be Gordon, Amy and Mark. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Gordon?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
So we have, I should have probably said, the votes are 3, 0, 2 abstaining.
All right.
Okay. We'll move on to correspondence. And there was an email on 6:30 from Holly Mary regarding a public document request. And I believe that's been satisfied if anybody on the board has got any input on that.
I believe it has been.
Okay. Anybody else commenting? Okay. Again, on 6:30, we have another email from Assistant Holly Mary. It was a public, public document request. That request was on Trup's rebuttal letter I read at the meeting on 6:18. To my knowledge, that public document request has been filed and satisfied. Is there any comment on that?
I believe that's correct.
It is.
The next item is an email on July 6th regarding Mutual Bank Darren Grady. And I do recall reading that in, I believe something triggered cleaning of the retention basins at the rear of the property. And I believe there's a report in there to indicate that that work was done.
Oh, that's pretty good, because we didn't hear anything back from them.
What triggered that letter regarding the cleaning, or Mark?
It actually came about with the construction of the O'Reilly Building. And the abutto was concerned, so there was some issues. We actually spoke to someone from Mutual Bank, and I believe that that's been bought over, we never heard back from anyone. So I'm, I'm actually surprised that they did it and that's good to hear.
Okay, so to clarify for the audience, someone from Mutual, someone from the O'Reilly site questioned?
In a butter, the abutter who, they abut the bank and our, I believe, two properties down from O'Reilly.
Okay, so we don't know who that was.
The Algers.
Okay, all right. And it appeared from the documents that we received that the basin was cleaned. I personally have not been out there to take a look at it. I'm assuming, knowing Grady Associates, excuse me, I'm assuming that knowing Grady Associates that if we got a letter saying the work was done, that the work was done. if we got a letter saying the work was done, that the work was done. Does anybody have any questions, or anybody want to make a site visit?
Did we get that letter on our email, and I just missed it?
I got the letter, I got something.
I got the letter.
Email number five.
Thank you. Okay, so basically, they did comply with what the abutter asked for, is that my understanding?
That's what the letter appears to say.
I'm just clarifying, because that's what the abutter wanted, because it's just like, forget it, I get it, okay, thank you, you answered my question.
I don't know.
I'm gonna take a walk out there and take a look at it.
Okay, that's fine, Gordon. Did we get some sort of a complaint in writing, or was it a telephone call, or?
Many.
It was during the meetings.
It was during one of the meetings?
Or many of them.
There's been many complaints.
Okay, then I might suggest to Joanne that whoever come in, if we still have their name and address and information, then I might suggest that we send the letter to them with a copy of that letter indicating that it's been cleaned. If the board so wishes.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
Maybe I'll ask for a motion, I'm sorry, noted, okay. I, I think I'd probably prefer to have a motion on that, so it's on the record.
Okay, I'll make a motion to send the abutter the Grady's letter so that they can see that the work was done. That's probably not worded the best, but it's good enough, right?
Yep, it's been, can I get a second, please?
Second.
I'll second that.
We'll take a roll call vote, Gordon?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan Diaz, yes. Okay, going down to the next item, and I have to kind of apologize, because I mixed up these addresses. There is a letter from Alicia Karahati from CNS Energy.
Oh.
The address on the, on the agenda is for 241 Franklin, but it addresses Mr. DeBona's issue at 229 Franklin. And maybe Amy can put it on the screen, because I don't.
I will do that, I just got it right here, it's the one that, okay, yep.
It appears that they have agreed to swap white spruces for a full privacy vinyl fence.
Is this, hold on, is this the one?
Hmm, no, that's it, no.
It says, hope you're well, we have a request from the neighbor at 229 Franklin Street to swap out the screening trees with the vinyl fence.
Could you attach the, the, it says, take a look at the letter on the spec sheet. Something from the building inspector, I, I have a letter dated July 7th, 2020. And the letterhead is CNS, and it's.
Oh, I have it now, okay, is this it?
Yes.
Yeah, and there's the plan.
Okay. Obviously, Mr. DeBona, and he's probably not with us, did not receive that. We still can leave it on the agenda for our next meeting, and I might ask Joanne to send Mr. DeBona a, a copy of this, but I think we need to discuss it. If it's in the site plan, then it needs to be modified, if it's in the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, then they need to go to Conservation and have that done.
So maybe we should make a motion to send this to Michael DeBona, so that he can review it before the 6th?
Yeah, I don't know that we would need a motion, it's only correspondence, we're not, we're not going to take any action, we don't really have anything in front of us. If, if we want to look at the, the site plan and, and we need to make a change there, then I think a motion might be, might be appropriate, but we just got communications, we can forward this, he can start the ball rolling, or they can start the ball rolling with Conservation if that's who ordered it. As long as we keep it on our agenda, we'll know in a, in a few weeks. I'm sure Mr. DeBona will give us a status, and we'll know whether we ordered it or Conservation ordered.
Okay.
And then if the change is made, we'll have it noted on the site plan.
Correct.
I wish we saw that earlier.
It was in my pile of papers and.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, I mean, I didn't make the connection either.
I know, no, I wasn't saying any of that, I was just meaning like, it would have been nice if we figured it out.
Correct.
Well, yeah, I mean, we read it in, but I didn't connect her name to that project.
Anybody have any other comments on this? We're going to call it 241 Franklin. Any other comments or suggestions on this one?
The only thing that, um, I was wondering is that line of fence, the 200 linear feet, is that what, what the abutter is requesting? Or it's actually longer, yeah, right?
Yeah, so it looks like they're proposing to just put the fence where the trees were, but he wants that whole line.
All the way to that corner, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So it sounded like it was, they're proposing 200 feet, and he was proposing 375. And what he came up with that was, if you took the linear footage of both rows of trees, then it would equal, so.
Okay, I see, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I, I see what you mean now. So that's why he didn't mention this letter. Okay, we'll leave it again on our agenda for the next meeting. And Joanne, Joanne, if you could, if this matter does come up again, we might put both addresses on there, and then we'll kind of, maybe the members will realize that we've got 229 and 241 are the same issue. Okay. We have notices from East Bridgewater and a town of Pembroke on decision letters. I do not have them in front of me.
I can put them on the screen.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody's got any question on them, I'm assuming they're typical 48 letters that need to be provided to abutting towns on variances or special permits.
All right, that's the one, East Bridgewater one, and then you want me to move to the second one, Alan?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions on this, this is, these are pretty standard? Okay, you can go to the second one, there's no, no comment.
Sorry.
Not, not as good, though, kind of just let everyone know that when we get those correspondence, that doesn't always mean there's some direct effect.
Amy, I think you have the East Bridgewater one on.
Yeah, is that what, that's what I'm supposed to have on, or no?
There's three of them, right?
Yeah, that's, this is the second one.
Noticees, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay.
Three, three from East Bridgewater, one from Pembroke.
Contract again.
Should I go to?
Does anybody have, anybody want to read this, or they have any concerns? Hearing none, we'll probably move on to the next.
All right.
This particular notice is for a hearing, we wouldn't have had any comments on it anyways, so. It was just a hearing on, it looks like a variance for Section 6 of the zoning bylaw. It's setback. That really has no impact on the town of Halifax, anybody have any questions on this?
I do not.
Okay, we can move on.
Pembroke.
Yeah, go to Pembroke. This is a subdivision approval. I have no idea where 70 Old Cock Path Lane is in Pembroke, I don't know if you do, Gordon, you know Pembroke pretty well.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. We can look at it, does anybody want to continue to look at it, any questions? I guess hearing none, Amy, you can, we can go to the next one? But this, let me see, that was the one. Yeah, we, now, we're here now with, and I don't have the notices in front of me. And I don't remember, I don't know how many we actually have notices, but Amy can put them all up. This one's on a long-term trailer permit at 87 Plymouth Street, I did see that out there. I think these are typically six-month permits that the selectmen give out. Anybody have any questions or concerns on temporary trailer permit?
No, is that, is that at the house that was condemned last year, the split level?
No, no, I think that one, if, the one that you're talking about, I think is at number 48. They're renovating that now, this is on the opposite side of the street. I'm not sure what happened to this, I just did see that there was a trailer hooked up there. Because typically, they, they need to connect into the septic and someone should.
There was a fire there, wasn't there?
Was there a fire?
Yeah.
Okay, then that answers the question, that's why there's a six-month trailer permit.
Makes sense, okay, all right, next one.
Next one, please. All right, the next one is, if we can see, there's a reorganization for the Board of Selectmen, Tom Millius, Gordon C. Andrews, and Troy Garen, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Clerk.
Next.
The next one is, there was a hearing on July 13th on the application of Gordon C. Andrews' appealing and request for enforcement on the Amanda Estates. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Anybody got any questions on that?
Nope.
Amy, on the.
That's, that's it.
That is it, okay. The next item on the agenda, and I need a little help with this, there was a zoning bylaw change ad from April 24th, 20, that needed to be approved, but still needs signatures. I would suggest to Joanne that and I don't know how many signatures you need. If you need.
Just made one.
You need one?
Yeah.
Okay. Where this bill was from April 24th, I would kind of suggest Gordon, go in and sign it, can you, can you take that, Gordon?
Yep.
Okay, all right, and where it's from April, they're probably sending in demand notices.
Yeah, I don't think so, there's a ad for the paper.
Okay, so if you could, if you could take, take care of that, we'd appreciate it. Is there any other business that the board needed to discuss?
There, there is, I got an email from the Secretary of State, but I can't find it on my email again about the open meeting law violation that the planning board was turned in on, and I would read the email, but I can't find it.
Is this relative, is this relative to the email?
Correspondence of emails back and forth.
Is this the reply all email, or was there different email?
That one.
Okay, you can just, if you, what did the Secretary of State say, don't do it again?
Said that we can either just put the thing in and say, and make mention that we received it, and that we're working towards not doing that again.
Okay.
Or read it in, I just, I, I don't know what happened, I can't find it.
We don't have to do anything formal on it, right, because I know as a board, we all agreed that we weren't looking for anything.
Unfortunately, Mark, unfortunately, Mark, with the Secretary of State's office, it's got to be recorded in the, in the meeting minutes. So if.
So I'll pull it up for the next meeting.
Yeah, if, if Gordon, when they got that and Joanne didn't get it, I would suggest that we schedule the open meeting law violation on our next agenda. And we'll probably just read that into the record and just take a vote that it's not going to happen again. And I think, Joanne, Joanne should be able to hear me.
I'm sure she.
Okay, is there anything else that any of the members need to discuss?
I would make a motion to adjourn if that's.
I love that one.
Hey, is there, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, where we're zooming, I'm, I'm going to keep, continue taking roll call votes, Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Alan Diaz, yes. Okay, thank you.
Welcome aboard, you guys.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. And the next regular meeting is August 6th.